Good evening. It looks like we've got a full house. Welcome to the July 22, 2024 meeting of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And roll call, please. All right, we'll move to invocation. For invocation, if we could all please stand and have a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. May be seated. All right, so we have with us today our student from Pitt County. I'm Ya Pope from the Innovation Early College. Welcome. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Amaya Pope, and this upcoming school year, I will be a junior at Innovation Early College High School. So thank you for having me here this evening. Now, if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Amaya. All right, have a second. All right, it looks like that takes us to the public address to the board. Mr. Attorney, would you please read our little saying there?
I will. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
All right, first we have Linda Robinson.
Good evening. Linda Robinson, Greenville, 278458. And thank you for allowing me to be here. As you know, I was here on June 17, and I was asking for the pay increase for Sheriff Dance. And on June 28, I sent an email with 440 signatures from the citizens asking for pay increase for Sheriff Dance. Thank you, Vice Chair Nunley, for your response. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner Coulson, for your response. And it wasn't favorable. It wasn't what we were asking, and we're here asking again. Tonight, I have an additional 662 signatures for a total signatures of 1,202. Citizens in agreement with a pay increase for Sheriff Dance. I understand you told me I can get as many signatures as I want, that the answer is no. Well, I'm hoping that tonight, the answer will be yes. I'm hoping that you will consider and do a special vote on a motion and a vote to give her the pay increase. She asked for 12%, which would be 20,400. We're asking for 25%, which would be 42,500. You've made mention that she received the pay increase in 2019. That pay increase was to bring her up to the standard for being the sheriff for the 14th largest county in the state of North Carolina. Prior to that pay increase, she was being paid less than the police officers at ECU College. So it was necessary to give her that pay increase. It's been made known that her department is a department that comes before you more than any other department. Yes, because who else is she going to petition for the things that she need? It's required that her department petitions the commissioners. But she's never come with anything that she did not need, and every request that she's presented to the board has been denied initially. When she asked for the cameras for her deputies, they were the only deputies in the county law enforcement that did not have the cameras. She had already secured a 544,050 grant, but it was denied. It was denied that she received the cameras. Eventually, the deputies got the cameras. Out of 130 deputies, 80 received the cameras. You're not aware of the 544,050 grant? Is it noted? I understand. I have a lot more to say. Like I said before, I couldn't say it all in three minutes. But the main reason that we're here tonight is to ask you to do a motion and vote to grant her the raise that she's so, so. She deserves the raise. She's worked hard. It's been five years. Many of you have received raises.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you if you could bring it to a close. Thank you so much.
I can bring it to a close, and thank you for this opportunity. And like I said, I have the additional signatures, and if that's not enough, we'll continue to get more. Thank you.
All right, next, Bishop Rosie O'Neil.
Thanks to each of you for the opportunity, and let me thank you for your service to our county. We share a love for our county. My husband says he likes calling North Carolina specifically Eastern North Carolina home. And there are many things that we have that we can be proud of. And there are a lot of things that spring out of our community, and some of them out of our lesser identified communities that we can be proud of. But unfortunately, the spotlight and the support does not shine the way it should or lift the way it should if those who are achieving it are of minority status, whether that's race or gender. You know, we had the first African-American female Jewish rabbi ever in Greenville, and it was never spotlighted. Okay, we have a differently-abled fun fair. We've had it for 15 years. And it was the first, many say, of its kind on that level that brings the special needs community in and ministers to them. And it's a struggle to get any spotlight for it. There have been numerous accomplishments, y'all, by Hispanic, Asian parts of our community, but we just don't see the same kind of spotlight. Now, like my sons went to school with Mr. Beast, and so grateful that he's here, and he has shined a light on Greenville. But what would have happened if his efforts had been pushed away and he'd ended up in LA or New York or somewhere else? His, his just being here adds to the dreams of our kids. And our request for Sheriff Dance is not just because she should be do that raise. Now, I'm not sure if there was a cap set on her salary that she was unaware of. That probably should have been brought up, if there is. But when you find somebody that is doing something that brought national attention to our area, that's getting people coming out of the prisons, and they have skills. When you have somebody that has instituted community bonding efforts, then we don't want to crush it because they can become sullen or sour or end up in some other community now all of a sudden being spotlighted for their efforts. Now, I really want to see her get this raise. Like, I want everybody to be paid well. But I'm probably a little more concerned at the what seemed to be hostility because she asked for it. Now, that's what has me torn up. Because as a woman, and we just talked, I've seen where a man will come in and say, hey, you know, let me drop my voice. Hey, hello, you know, I've got this skill and that skill. I've done this and I've done that. And we go, that's a man. That's assertive. That's leader. That's a leadership characteristic. But when a woman does that same thing, it's almost as if we've, she's assaulted someone's sensibility and is seen as overly assertive. That's supposed to be my closing. Now, here it comes. So I'm concerned that if we penalize people for asking for the same opportunities that others get, then we send a message that they are not seen as equal. And if we do that, we're going to miss our own talent and lose some of the benefit that we could have. Please give this woman and her team the raise she deserves.
Thank you, Bishop O'Neil. Robin Abbott.
Mr.委員, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I thank you for what you've done. Every one of you guys stepped up when you recognized that deputy sheriff's pay in this county was not compatible with other counties. Every one of us are grateful for you taking it to the table, voting on it, and making those raises happen for each and every one of us. I've been sworn in Pitt County since 1982. I was sworn under Ralph Tyson. I spent 20 of those years as auxiliary deputy because I worked in private industry, in the chemical manufacturing business, with Burris Welcome, Galaxo Welcome, Dutch State Mines. So I bring a multitude of talents to the table in Pitt County. My wife worked for this county school board for 41 years. If you can remember, I'm sure, Ms. Warren, you remember Ott Offord.
Yes.
Ott Offord hired her. So that tells you that between Yvonne and I together, about, just about 100 years of service to the citizens of Pitt County, just the two of us. But now, I think it's time to look at Sheriff Dance. Look at her record. Look at what she's done. It speaks for itself. I've seen a lot of good things come from Sheriff Dance that were initiatives that other counties have not achieved. But in just a short number of years, we have stepped into the limelight of a lot of other areas that look and see what Pitt County Sheriff's Office does. She's a good person. She's a genuine person, and she cares about each and every citizen of Pitt County and to do the right thing. I'm, I don't know exactly what a raise would be for the sheriff. The county commissioners would have to study that and look at it and set that amount. But I think it's something that needs to be entertained. I think it's something that needs to come to the table. I think it's something that needs to be voted on. And I don't really have a whole lot more to say other than that. But I'm an older guy, and I've been around a long time. Some of you guys I know personally. Some of you I have met. You're younger than I am. Some of you we've had personal conversations with. I'm missing a couple up here tonight that I have known for a very long time. I don't know of anything else I can add to this. But please take a look at Sheriff Dance's raise. Five years of service, multiple accolades from different various organizations that come to the table with her. She brought these things. They weren't there before she came. She is solely responsible. Good, solid leadership, good, solid work ethic, and she works extremely hard. There, I'm sure, as captain of Patrol Division, my phone never quit ringing, and I was just the captain of one division. Now, I'm captain of Civil Division, and I don't get those phone calls because everybody that's with me goes home at 5 o'clock now.
Now, Captain, if you could go ahead and wrap it up for us.
It's a good thing. But the sheriff's phone rings all the time. She's obligated for this function. She's obligated for this meeting. I'm sure she never gets hardly any time of her own through the seven-day week to call her own. But she's done so many wonderful things for Pitt County. I think it's just time that, that, that her raise be recognized, brought to the table, discussed, input with her, input with you guys, and see what you can work out. We're all on the same table. We want the best for Pitt County. We want the safest Pitt County we can have.
Thank you, Captain Abbott. If you could wrap it up, please, sir.
I will. I appreciate your time, Commissioner. Thank you.
Matt Stokes, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Stokes. My address is on file, as I'm a county employee. I'm a lifelong resident of Pitt County, having grown up and currently residing in the Eastern Pines area of our county. I'm currently a lieutenant at the Detention Center. In my 16 years with the sheriff's office, I've never worked for a sheriff who has supported and believed in their staff more than Sheriff Dance has. In my opinion, the sheriff's scope of responsibilities far exceeds that of any other law enforcement position in our county. No other entity has the task of operating a law enforcement office while also maintaining a jail. Our jail isn't a basic holding facility that houses 100 or so inmates. We are a 500-bed facility that houses inmates charged with anything from misdemeanor larceny to capital murder. I can attest to the efficiency and level of professionalism our department provides our citizens as I was once a transport officer. I've traveled to almost every jail or detention center in our state. Some of you would be appalled at the differences in appearance and professionalism you would see elsewhere. It would be one thing to have all this responsibility and be terrible at the position, but I can assure you she is not. From my experience with her meeting with people from state mental health advocates, US Marshals, to our local judicial officials, you will not find a person more prepared or organized for a meeting. If you think because she is busy, you're going to ask her a question you didn't think she was ready for, you'd be mistaken. She has always been approachable and compassionate with staff as well as inmates. I've never seen another sheriff in one of our housing units around inmates until her. Her level of dedication to the people of Pitt County, regardless of stature, is immeasurable. She indeed truly cares. She fights hard for what she believes in, no matter the cost, and to me, that is the definition of leadership. Year after year, education tops your priority list, followed by public safety. Best in the East, a leader in the state, the sheriff has done her part to make that mission statement true and continues to be a great representation and asset to our county.
Thank you, Deputy Stokes. Sarah Clark.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Clark. I have been a detention officer with the sheriff's office for two and a half years. I have also enjoyed living in Pitt County since 2018, where I currently live, in Mr. Smith and Ms. Ward's District, District 5. I would like to start off by saying, on behalf of all of Sheriff Dance's staff, we are genuinely and extremely grateful and appreciative of the raises you all recently approved for us. I understand a raise of any magnitude is not a decision that can be made quickly or without proper validation. With that being said, Sheriff Dance is far from your average sheriff. Everyone knows she has made history here in Pitt County. Many know about her ample achievements and contributions for this community. But not everyone knows just how true she is to her mission. She is not only here to ensure our citizens follow the laws. She is on a mission to make Pitt County a better place for everyone. She believes in Pitt County and has taken many successful risks to improve our community. Her selfless act of fighting for our raises before her own, her passion for people and her community, her drive to never stop, and her impressive list of contributions for Pitt County could not be more astonishing. Another thing to consider is the fact that being a sheriff requires an entire community to choose you. A sheriff is not appointed by a board of people, and they are not hired through a standard application process. Sheriff Dance was chosen, not just once, but twice now. In fact, the percentage of our community that wanted her as sheriff increased between elections, despite the number of voters decreasing. In case that isn't impressive enough, let me remind you that not only are nearly over half of all 100 other sheriffs elected as uncontestant contestants. But between 2018 and 2022, when Sheriff Dance election and reelection took place, our whole country had changed. We were battling a historic pandemic. Law enforcement was in the media spotlight for all the wrong reasons, and our economy crumbled. Through it all, Sheriff Dance was able to continuously provide for our community. She consistently lowered the crime rates, provided the county with income, and used grants and loans that never affected the county's budget to get things done to make our county a better place to live. Lastly, this board is made up of past and present educators, small business owners, retirees, law enforcement, and Pitt County citizens. Sheriff Dance has contributed to each of your lives in ways you may not realize. It's time to show her the personal appreciation she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Clark. Justin, and I'm not able to read the last name, Justin?
Girkens.
Girkens, sorry, sir. And, and, and folks, if I am a little strict on time, it's just that we have a lot, and we've got 30 minutes allotted, so we want to make sure that we stay on target. So I do apologize if I have to cut you off, but thank you.
Mine's not going to take that long. Good evening, commissioners and distinguished guests. My name is Justin Girkens. I live in Farnville. And I, in three days, I will be with Pitt County Sheriff's Department for 14 years. And just want to let you know that I have worked under three different sheriffs, and each one of them had their own unique style. They had the, each one of them were effective in getting things done. However, Sheriff Dance stands alone with her ability to make positive things happen. Here's just one example. I worked as the kitchen officer for five and a half years. And early on, we started recycling tin cans, plastic jugs. And with the help for, from John Demery, Paula Clark, and their fine crew, together with the sheriff's guidance, she was able to give back many dollars to the citizens of Pitt County for material that would otherwise go into the landfill with no benefit to anyone. This is one example of a common sense approach that she implemented that will benefit us all without sacrificing safety and security. Our county is on pace to be in the top 10 very soon. People moving here daily. In my opinion, the citizens of Pitt County are fortunate to have a longtime resident who is a beacon to all. And in closing, there are many more good things I could say about Sheriff Dance and her dedication to the citizens of Pitt County, but most of you are already aware. Sheriff Dance is a leader among her peers who is fair and consistent. She meets people where they are without judgment. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Sharon Evans.
Good evening. I am Dr. Sharon McDonald Evans, and it is a pleasure to be here, and I will be back again if need be. However, Sheriff Dance is the first African-American female in the state of North Carolina to be elected. She is the fifth African-American female sheriff in the country. She brings a lot to Pitt County. Other areas recognize her caring, her delivery, her compassion, and her capability. And it's time for us to start doing that. Now, there was an article in the Daily Reflector that included comments from the county manager who stated, "Pitt County generously supports the operations of the sheriff." Well, that is your statutory obligation in the county, according to North Carolina General Statute 153A-443. This statute outlines the responsibilities of the county commissioners in providing adequate facilities and equipment for the sheriff's office and other county offices. That is not a personal benefit of Sheriff Dance. That is your responsibility to the citizens of the county for her to adequately serve them and house inmates. Now, North Carolina General Statute 162-24 is a statute that gives the sheriff the exclusive rights to hire, discharge, supervise employees in her office. And the county commissioners have no role in that decision-making process, although you do control the budget because that is according to the statute. Now, I look at the different legislators and say, hey, we may need to think about changing the statutes to add something in there so that our local sheriffs are not battling with county commissioners to get things that are rightfully due to them. My deep concern is about your refusal to record your stance and make a formal vote on the issue granting or denying her a raise because many people think that you've already voted, and you have not. You refuse to put that on the agenda. This decision, or lack thereof, raises significant ethical concerns and undermines the principles of transparency and accountability, which are our fundamental rights in a democratic process. I have been here with the sheriff. I've seen your facial expressions. I've seen your interactions. I've seen the things that you report in the media. And yet, she still remains strong and stands firmly about her convictions on anything as it relates to it. You are elected officials just like she is, and you are accountable to the constituents. As you see, you have constituents here who are concerned about your level of accountability to them and our law enforcement officers. So we would like to see a recorded vote that provides a clear and official record of each commissioner's stance, ensuring that the public can hold their representatives accountable. And I will stop, but I'll be back.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Trev Evans.
Good evening. My name is Trev Evans, and I am a citizen of Winneville, North Carolina. I've known Sheriff Dance since the late 90s, as she was my resource officer at AB Griffin High School. I stand in support for a well-deserved raise for Sheriff Dance, whose exemplary leadership and unwavering dedication to Pitt County has significantly enhanced the safety, efficiency, and overall well-being of our community. Sheriff Dance's accomplishments speak volumes about her commitment to serving the citizens of Pitt County with integrity, innovation, and compassion. Under her leadership, she recognized the significance of the Second Amendment and the need for timely services. Sheriff Dance hired additional staff to reduce the wait time for gun permits. Her efforts have ensured that Pitt County citizens can exercise their rights without unnecessary delays. Sheriff Dance has demonstrated a profound understanding of the complexities of the mental health and substance issues in our community. She has implemented programs specifically designed to address law enforcement's responses to these challenges, ensuring a more compassionate and effective approach to individuals in crisis. The creation of the award-winning program, Sharp &amp; Ware, within our detention center further showcases her innovative approach to rehabilitation and reintegration. These initiatives provide inmates with valuable skills and support, paving the way for successful reentry into our society. Through a partnership with PCC, Sheriff Dance has brought educational opportunities inside the detention center, offering inmates a chance to better themselves academically and vocationally. This forward-thinking collaboration underscores her belief in second chances and the power of education to transform lives. Sheriff Dance has shown an unwavering dedication to the people of Pitt County through her innovative programs, strategic partnerships, and relentless pursuit for justice and transparency. Her accomplishments have, have set a high standard for law enforcement and have undoubtedly contributed to the safety and well-being of our community. It is for these reasons and more that I strongly support and advocate for Sheriff Dance receiving a well-deserved raise. Her leadership, vision, and tireless efforts have made a profound impact on Pitt County, and it is only fitting that we recognize and reward her outstanding contributions before time.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Chief Capehart.
Good evening. Chief Capehart, Chief of Detention Service for Pitt County.
I want to start by saying she is worthy, and I want to repeat that again, that she is truly worthy. As I began to think about my career, my journey, I know what it's like to be undervalued. And I think in this situation here, as I look at the opportunities that have been presented to you to give an opportunity for an increase, Sheriff has done so much for this county. She has sacrificed herself for this county. She has sacrificed for the citizens of the county, as well as the inmates of the detention center, as well as the staff members that work with me. And remember, many of my colleagues have already spoken about what she truly means to them. And I really want you guys to consider, and ladies, to consider what she truly means to the county as it relates to how will you all serve your positions. Sheriff is a very strong-willed person who has provided professional commitment to, whether it be supporting staff for increases, which is sacrificing herself to do so and sometimes doing so very sternly. And I truly understand that her personality may come off a little abrasive at times, but it's because she truly believes in what she's trying to deliver for the community and the citizens of Pitt County. She won't waver away from it, no matter what. No matter if she's liked or disliked, any decision that is associated with taxpayers should never be decided by individuals that may deem it necessary to judge her based upon not truly liking her personality. Focus on what she's really worth to the county, and take that into very serious consideration, because you know who wins at the end of the day? Pitt County wins. And it's not just awards, but it's in how we walk in our daily lives that impact whatever it is that we do. You guys, and ladies, forgive me, you all have the power to impact a change to support a sheriff that has been worthy of everything that she has done to represent Pitt County. I've not seen no other sacrifice better. And I think about my 34th year, as I continue on right now. 34 years dedicated to Pitt County, completely underserved in my time. So don't overlook the sheriff and underserve her as it relates to a few dollars that not comes out of your pocket, but comes out of, every taxpayer in this county should have a say in that representation of whether or not she gets an increase. But low and behold, make sure that we give her and prop her up, because remember now, she's only human. She needs to be propped up too, for all the work that she has done to serve this county. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Capehart. The next name, I have difficulty reading. Deputy K.R.O.U. Is there someone that signed up and has not spoken yet? Whose name starts with a K? Okay, we'll pass over that for now. Deputy Toler.
Hello, my name is Deputy Toler. I work with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. I'm a, I'm a new face to, to the scene here, and there's a reason why. I came from Boone PD, and there is where our town council didn't support our police department, and we lost a huge amount of officers due to that, and I don't want to see that here. I can say just from the, I came here in November, I can say just from the amount of time I've been here that every single person that I've encountered has spoke highly of Sheriff Dance. Even during my interview, she made sure that this place was going to be a home for me, that I was going to be supported, and that's, that's all I felt is just love from the sheriff. She's also the only high-ranking official I've ever went and spoke to where you can just go in her office and be like, hey, Sheriff, like, how are you doing? And she'll have a conversation about your family, your friends, or stuff like that. A lot of people, like chiefs and stuff like that, don't give you the time of day like that. And so I'm just extremely grateful, grateful for the sheriff, and I appreciate everything that she's done. But like I said, this raise is for her, and just please, please show the support to our sheriff like she's shown to us, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Deputy Toler. Detention Officer Dixon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you guys today. I started off with Pitt County in September of 2022, not knowing what to really expect. One thing that drove me to apply was Sheriff Dance, the first black sheriff, the first black female sheriff, somebody that looked like me, somebody that I could relate to. That is what drove me to work for Pitt County. She's an amazing person. Like everybody has said, you can come and talk to her, and I don't care how many employees she has, she's gonna remember your face. There's not many people that's gonna do that. One thing that always stood out to me was her determination, her grace, her dignity, always carrying herself with just an amazing spirit, even with the odds stacked against her, a person of color and a woman at that. I remember the first year she ran, many doubted her. Look how far we've come since then. From the countless programs she has implemented to help not only the youth, but the inmates who struggle with addiction, programs that have been proven to work. She has literally walked the walk when most have just talked the talk about what changes they were gonna make. Then you have those like myself who put this uniform on every single day with pride. I can't say enough about the years of blood, sweat, and tears and money she has literally put on the line so that we can have the pay we deserve. That is what a leader does. Five years is a mighty long time to be undervalued and unappreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to thank everyone that came to speak tonight. We are out of time for the public comments, and we will have to move forward, but thank you so much. We'll move on to presentations. Employee of the Month, Manager Gallagher.
Yes, the figure good on front is Crystal Melton here. Crystal Melton? Ah, there she is. Okay, great. Mr. Vice Chair will join me out front to present. Members of the board, Vice Chair Melanie, and those in attendance, it is my absolute pleasure to present this evening our certificate of recognition to Crystal Melton for being selected as this month's Employee of the Month. Crystal works in our Economic Development Division, and there is a certificate that reads "A recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens that we serve." And the nomination this time, they're always very meaningful, but just want to read a little bit from her nomination. It says, "Crystal was nominated for her integrity and dedication to excellence. She has been an exemplary, dependable, and valuable employee. She has taken on her duties, as well as additional responsibilities beyond her job scope, and has adapted to changes with grace. Her positive attitude shines through in her customer service to partners, vendors, and coworkers. Crystal successfully prepared and managed multiple federal and state grants, such as EDA, the Economic Development Association, Golden Leaf, NC Commerce, and NC Railroad Grants. These awards have totaled millions of dollars and have afforded new and existing industries opportunities to grow, and in turn, Pitt County has grown as well. Crystal has served Pitt County for nine years and is now serving as project manager in our Economic Development Department." So I'll have the Vice Chair presenting to you, along with a $100 check, which was directed positive to thank you for your service.
Crystal, thank you so much for your service. For those of you that do not know, Crystal is the heartbeat of Economic Development Office in Pitt County. Without her, nothing happens. And that is serious, folks. So, Crystal, thank you so much, this was well deserved.
All right, we will move right on to items for report. John Demery, Jason Randall. Turn it over.
Good evening. I'm here really to introduce Jason. So when Jason was hired about six months ago, obviously his main responsibility is litter control and, and illegal dumping, but also put him in charge of the convenience sites, a new face to look at the sites, do some inspections, and so he's here to report his findings of the last six months, and I'll turn it over to Jason.
Good evening, Commissioners and Ms. Gallagher. Good to see y'all. So I'm gonna get right into it. Again, I'm Jason Randall, Deputy Director of Solid Waste and Recycling. I'm also environmental enforcement and over all 14 collection sites. And as you can see, we have a collection site, 14 collection sites over, all over Pitt County, all the way from Bethel to Aiden to Fountain, all the way over to Pactolis. And we have two site contractors that I follow up after to make sure they adhere to the contract as a contract manager. So we have Trust Denham Co. that has five sites, and Holding Temporarily Inc. has the other nine sites. And some of the site expectations we have is we want the sites to be open on time. We don't want anybody to get to the sites at 7:30 when they're open and have to wait, or the site is not open, or they throw it on the side of the road or throw it over the fence, so we want the sites to be open on time. We don't want them to be closed before the time they're supposed to be closed, just to give that service to the citizens to be able to dump their trash and recyclables there. And we, we also want the sites, the sites are intended for citizen personal use only, not any commercial or private businesses are supposed to be dumping their construction and demolition items or commercial garbage. So, for instance, some of the citizens get it mixed up, or some, some of the small business owners are citizens, and they're helping other citizens out, so they'll collect their trash and say, this is citizen trash. And like, no, you, you're making money, so you need to go to the landfill or something like that. So we want, we want the site attendants to keep those people out and let the, you know, keep the bins clear for the citizens to use. We want the site attendants to keep the sites clean and running well. We want them to keep them safe, and we want them to guide the citizens to what we collect and not collect, and if, you know, if they put something in the wrong spot, we want the site attendants to fish some of the non-collectibles out and safely removing non-acceptable items, not going into the container, but we give them tools to be able to reach in and get stuff out safely. So, keep moving on here. And so, again, site expectations, as you can see on the left is a example of a site ramp that's free of litter. They have like two, two garbage cans where they keep their, their tools to be able to, you know, cleaning tools to keep the site clean. So that's kind of organizing. The fence there on the right is, is no, no trash on the fence on either side, so this is what we're looking for. This is our expectations. Underneath these garbage compactors, they get really nasty, but if you spray them all, you spray under there every day and get a rake and rake the trash up every single day, then it's, it's an easy job. But if you let it build up over time, it gets hard, and you know, you might have to get in there and put some elbow grease to it. So, we, we, we explain to our site, site attendants to stay on it every day, and that's what we expect. These are some examples of like the cardboard containers, the yard waste containers, furniture containers, look like these ones here, and we expect those to be clean underneath, and we always get on our site attendants, when, when our roll-off drivers come and pull the containers, to dump them at the landfill, we, that's a good time for them to get under there and clean. So this is an example of some of the stuff we take, like we, we accept glass food and beverage bottles only. That's the only glass we accept in glass container, and as you can see, it's nothing but glass food and beverage bottles only. I said that twice because you'll, you'll see in a minute that we get more than food and beverage bottles, but. And it's on the site attendant to direct the public that we don't take this, we don't take plastic bags, take the glass out of the bags and dump it in there, but if the site attendant's not out of the house, going, interacting with the public, the public will just throw the trash in and keep going. And on the right, you see chemical jugs that we accept from farmers, and this is, this is the only chemical jug, the only shape, size, it's the only thing we collect, and that, that's the only thing supposed to be in that container. And some of the site house rules, we came up with these, these rules because when I first got here in February, John, he took me around all 14 sites, and the first thing I noticed is that it, it was like, they would have 10, 10 rakes, seven shovels, five blowers, and it was just tools everywhere. It was tools everywhere, and some of the sites weren't, not, not the majority of them, but there was a, a good number of them that wouldn't clean, and it was just a mess. So we, we went and we took notes, and I come up with ideas of what things we can do to try to help them keep clean and remind them of the job they're supposed to be doing. This is some of the rules we set out, and like for, for example, each site house is only allowed one chair, because 13 of the 14 only have one site attendant at a time there. So it's one chair, one table, one toaster oven, one microwave, one phone issued by the county, and one TV. We allow that in the site house, and if you have tools, they have to be organized and set to the side. And we did that so they wouldn't accumulate and scavenge and take stuff out of the trash and take it home with them. We're trying to put a stop to, because once the items cross the gate, it belongs to Pitt County. So if they're taking metal out of the metal bin, citizens or the site attendants, then they're stealing from the county. And the only site is Bales Fork County Home, people call it County Home. That's the only site that's allowed to have more than one table and more than one chair and more than one, certain sets of tools, because they have two at all times and three on the weekend, so. And this is another example of how we expect the site house to be like, around this site house on the left, there's no trash on the ground. You can see, I think it's like two rakes on the right side of the house there that's up against the wall, but it's not, it's not an eyesore, you know, because they, they need tools to work, and somebody probably was raking and put the rake there for a second. But it's overall clean. And on the right, I mean, it's an older site house, but it's overall organized, clean, and it's, it, it didn't smell too bad in there that day. I mean, I, I remember going in there, and I mean, they have one microwave, one small refrigerator, one chair, and they're trying to, and this is after I kind of, we kind of got after them a little bit, they, they cleaned up real quick and got it together. So. And before I get into some of my findings, just to, to list out some things we did to try to be fair and help the contractors get their site attendants and sites up to par. So in February, we toured all 14 sites with the, both contractors, each one of their sites, and we went over what was good, what was bad, and what we expect, just like I just went over in a few previous slides. In March, we conducted a yearly, we do it every year, but in March, we conducted our yearly site attendant meeting where we provided food to all the site attendants, and we went over all the expectations. We allowed them time to speak up for things they don't like, what they, what, if they need additional tools, or you know, give us insight on how they can do their job better, and, and we gave them insight of how we think we can do their job better. We, it was a good meeting, and we, we had a lot of people meeting and putting in input, so we did that. And in May, I went, I had two temp, temp, temp agency employees, we went to all 14 sites. We cleaned up seven tons of construction and demolition, tires, toilets, you name it, it was out there, old paint cans. We, we cleaned up seven tons of that material off all 14 sites, and we, we went And we went and painted all the railing to improve safety for, you know, people, you know, having accidents and falling over into the dumpsters or cars running off the side of the ramp or something like that. And so we improved there and we pressure washed the Aiden Griffin site and the Bells Fork site. And we're gonna continue to pressure wash the rest of them. And we completed, well, we pressure washed all sites but Aiden and Griffin. So we're gonna get those here coming up. And we paved, we did repair paving at Bethel, Welcome and Pactolas sites. And we're gonna get the rest of them here in the near future. All right, and so these are some of the site violations that we come across and not pointing out either contractor. We're just gonna kind of give you the images and give you the facts and let you be the judge. So here in the first picture, we had what, two microwaves, there's an air fryer that we don't allow. You know, it's just a couple of burners there that they can cook. I found a few site houses that were deep frying, frying chicken and frying fish. And it's got grease all up inside the walls and that's a fire hazard. So that's safety issues. This is a fire hazard on the left there, just all the clutter. And you got the heater in there, the propane heater and, you know, so it's just a fire hazard being that clutter. And then pretty much all but a few, there was, you know, people smoking inside the site houses. And so I've cleaned that up. I haven't come into contact, they're smoking outside the houses now, but I've noticed that pretty much all of them were smoking inside the house. And they were treating them like living areas instead of like a break room. So we're trying to put a stop to that. And this is just another example of people collecting items. Like I know it's hard to let somebody just throw a perfectly good rake or broom or some tool you can use, just throw it in the trash. But if you're working or you're representing Pitt County, if it crosses that line, it belongs to Pitt County and needs to go where it needs to go. So we tell the site attendants, if somebody lets leave something on the curb for the next citizen, just knock it in the bin and, you know, and there's rumors out there of what's being done with all the stuff and, you know, there's rumors about Facebook Marketplace and all that stuff. So we're trying to put a stop to scavenging, which is people taking stuff out of the bins and making money off of it. And this is an example of the garbage compactor, like on the left here. It wasn't cleaned up. You can tell it wasn't cleaned up in a while because it was hard and it was just, and it's hard to, you know, I couldn't get a good picture, but if you look way under there, you can see like a little mountain starting to form of just old garbage. And on the right, you seen two random garbage bags just sitting there on the ground, busted open, flies everywhere. And these items that you see going down the line of the compactor, those items were there like previous months. And I've taken pictures and like there's the same items there. So after I've gotten, after the contractor and the site attendant, it wasn't being, you know, cleaned up. So again, I got after them, trying to give them warning after warning. And so we had to impose fines. And here you can see old yard waste. It should be cleaned every time the container's pulled and maintained, but it's not being maintained, so we imposed fines on this. It's a hard picture to see, but there's trash all down the tree line, all in the, on the fence line. And here, this is the glass container. Like it should look like the previous glass container where it's glass bottle and food beverages only, but you got windows, mirrors, garbage. I found two toilets in one container one time. Couldn't find a picture, but I found two toilets in a container. This one is supposed to be chemical jugs only, but it's cardboard, trash, everything and that. So when I see stuff like this, it tells me at that site that the site attendant was, feet was kicked up watching TV all day, having a good time. Who knows what he was doing, but he wasn't out there, you know, watching, you know, or cleaning it up. Like if it happens, if a site is busy and it happens, it happens. But it's their job to go pick the non-collectibles out of there and put them where they're supposed to be. And this is like plumbing, piping, irrigation systems. That's all considered construction demolition items that shouldn't be in the furniture box. And they shouldn't even come to the sites. They should be taken to the landfill. And the site attendant should turn them away. And this is an example of scavenging where I showed up to this one site and they got a grill out, a metal table, a ceiling fan, a water hose holder, you know, a toy car there. And it's like, I know it's hard to throw some of this good stuff away, but we're recycling electronics, we're recycling the metal, so it's not thrown away. And some people are making money off the stuff that they're, you know, taking from the site. So it's like we're trying to put a stop to it. And this is an example of my inspection form that I made up where I kind of go out and inspect the sites. Say it either pass fails or I give them a warning. And I go over the form with them. I write notes, make sure they understand what needs to be corrected before I leave. And then I send one, a copy of this form to the contractor and let them know they need to go supervise that site because it's either a mess or this needs to be done. Or he corrected it right there in front of me. So I got after him, he done it, everything's okay. But so this is just to keep track of violations. So this is all the violations. Trust Denim Group has five sites and they had 23 waived fines. Holding Temporaries had nine sites and they only had eight. But the reason why we waived all the fines is because here I come out of left field being hired in February. I just started inspections in March and I'm just hammering people, you know. And it's like, that was sort of unfair. And we wanted, again, we're telling them, we're trying to be fair. We just decided to waive all the fines and we're gonna start like this week. This week, I'm meeting with John to go over a few problem sites that I had to find already. So we gave them ample amount of chances to get things going well again. And now we're gonna really start finding them and they're gonna either comply with the, you know, follow the rules or they're gonna have to pay for it and learn the hard way, I guess.
Can I just add? Our contract does say that we are allowed to fine them if there are violations of the contract. The first fine for a calendar year per site is waived and then we can fine them $100 per violation from then on.
So just to end on a more positive note, we're getting new first aid kits for all the site houses, additional safety railing in place that it needs to be to keep the site attendant safe and the site user safe, the drivers who come there all the time. Me and John, we talked about getting traffic, more traffic signs, stop signs, one way to get more organizations, because sometimes the sites get so busy, you get people just weaving in and out of, you know, traffic and just to make it safer for everybody. And my takeaway is it's a very large amount of waste and recyclables coming to the site every day, seven days a week. And the more waste that's coming with the rising population, rising the way it is, the more waste, the more upkeep. And when I see that word upkeep, it's really accountability. So I'm holding up the site attendants and contractors accountable to separate the recyclables, keep the site clean and presentable to the public, keeping it safe. And we, and when there's, when the citizens violate the rules, the site attendants will hold them accountable, you know, by being very polite, but still, you know, reporting to me and then I'll send them a warning and take it from there. If we have to keep going, we'll fine. Site safety for, site safety for site attendants and residents, both physical and sanitary. And that's just going back to the site house. The, if there's tripping hazards on the ramp, because some of the sites is just, it was just a mess. And it was stuff everywhere, water hoses, the tools, the rakes, the blowers just sitting out. So it's just keeping, you know, keeping the liability off the county. And in the near future, we're gonna be back with future recommendations for the new contracts and, you know, things we think can make the sites run more efficiently. And that's all I have. And if there's any questions, I can.
I have some questions.
Commissioner Perkins Williams.
Talking about my favorite topic, trash in Pitt County. I'd like to know where does, or where does the, what is it that you call it? I won't call it policing. Where does the trash?
Monitoring.
Yeah, enforcement. Enforcement of waste in various places throughout the county. Economic development depends on how we look, how we appear and what we do. And I want to ask, thank you, Mr. Demery. There you go, you knew I was gonna do that.
Okay, well, in my past budget, you approved us to purchase a grapple truck. And that is, we are getting prices right now. So we're looking at getting a truck. And I'm also in the process of hiring a driver for that truck. But let me also say that in the six months that Jason has been doing that work, he has sent out some citations, a bunch of citations, and we've gotten paid for it. And we've also gone out and cleaned up a lot of areas that needed cleaning up. So he's doing both jobs and I think he's doing a really good job with it. But we are gonna get the truck, we will have a man, and we will be able to go around and clean up other areas.
So that's the police, the enforcement.
Yes.
That's the enforcement and you only have one of those for Pitt County?
Just me by myself. With that other driver, he's gonna be an enforcer as well.
Okay. And will that be in your report for the future, like the areas that you do? And by the way, Mr. Demery, I did notice some improvement on trash in an area that you had. And I'd like to thank you, Chris. I think this has been the first time it's come. It's in an area where there are no homes on both sides of it. And that's where residents find it a good place to discharge their trash. And those are the places, I'd like to ask you about signage. Visitors, residents and whoever come through, are there any signs that tell them that they get fined for throwing trash out long highway?
The state's got some signs out. I think I can't, it's like $200 fine if you're caught littering. But we, like I said, Jason has sent out some citations. They're only $100 citations, but we've put out a number and people have paid for them.
Also, we have, we have signs that say what you're talking about, but it's, we have to get permission from the landowners. So I've put out a few signs, but if this, if it doesn't belong to Pitt County, I have to get permission before I put up signs on there.
Along the highway? Along the road, the rural roads and stuff? Because there's been a pig and there's been this and that along the highway.
I think we would probably have to get approval from DOT if it's DOT's right of way. I mean, we surely can look, look at it. But areas, going back to littering and illegal dumping areas, we do have, the planning department, Eli, made us a map. And if he goes out to an area, he can pinpoint it. He can send it to this mapping system and it tells us, we can run a map and see if it's, you know, if we're having the same issues in that area. And we go and he'll go and sit in that particular area.
Okay. So you're the policeman, I mean the enforcement person?
Yes.
Where we used to have deputies, but you are the enforcement of it now?
Yes, ma'am. We can, by the county's solid waste ordinance, do, you know, follow that. And we, one of the other things we've both been working on is updating that solid waste ordinance and maybe, and trying to put a little bit more teeth into it. So we will be bringing that back sometime in the near future for your adoption. And it's something that needs, the solid waste ordinance needed to be updated and we're in the process of that.
Thank you for what you're doing. And we do have some issues and that depends on development and economics for us. And the better we appear to people who come through, maybe that's best for settlement of residents and new residents. Thank you.
Commissioner Colson.
So I guess I will say welcome aboard, Jason. I'm a lame duck here, so you won't be seeing me much longer. I decided not to run again. But anyway, two questions. I have tires mounted on steel rims, two of them. How do I get rid of them? Do I need to take the tires off?
We would like for you to, but if you can't, we'll take them.
Where do you put them?
You have to bring them to the transfer station.
Okay. Second question, fines and forfeitures by state constitution is 90% of all fines and forfeitures go to school system. So do 90% a year fines end up going to the school system?
This, I can say this is, I'm not sure. But we just started this, so.
You might want to check into that. Oh, and as far as that goes, Ms. Mary, if you want to stop the trash pickup, I mean, people littering, it needs to be enforced. Well, just the other day, as I'm driving back home and there's a highway patrolman in front of me. In front of him was a car and in front of him was a truck, at which time somebody threw a bottle out the window. Now I saw that. I'll bet you the highway patrolmen saw it. Did I see the highway patrolman pull him over? No. In my opinion, is we need to get the state constitution changed to where 90% of the money doesn't go to the school system. Maybe 50% of it ought to go to the, well, I'm thinking more of the highway patrol because they're the one doing the stopping. If they're not getting paid for it, if there's no incentive for them to do it, that's why you see a lot of trash. I mean, every day I see somebody littering.
It's still going on, but I can say that we're seeing more and more people covering their loads coming to the transfer station. But it hasn't stopped the littering. True.
Are the torps at the convenience sites? Because at one time you were talking about giving those out.
Yes, I've been giving them out littering on the weekends. I'll stop at a collection site and just have about two boxes full of them, probably 40 of them, and just give them out with information and little, you know.
Because if these people with the, you know, the pickup of trash at the yards come so often, those are the people that need that covering to be done. I think that would help a great deal.
Thank you, Chair, by Chairman Nunnely. I want to say welcome, Jason. And also, I'm glad that you gave the people, you waived the fines until they have an opportunity to get used to you monitoring. And it's good that you, you know, what they say, start at home. So it looks like you started at the sites, making sure that the sites are clean and presentable for Pitt County. So that's a good place to start. I'm sure we did not know that our sites looked like those pictures you just showed us.
Not all of them did.
Not all of them.
It was just a handful.
Yeah, just a handful, but I'm sure we didn't know that. So again, thank you for allowing them time to get their site cleaned up and everything.
And the potholes and ditches.
So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to Russell Hill, June 2024 tax collection report. How you doing, Russell?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Nonley, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. The fiscal year combined tax collection rate through June 30 of 2024 for real and personal property was 99.51%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 99.39%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. If there are no questions, it's my recommendation to approve the June 2024 tax collection report as presented.
We have a motion? Move second.
I second.
Russell, I think you have a check. I paid my taxes.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Don't become a bother, Mr. Eer.
All right, doubleheader. You're up again, Mr. Hill.
All right. Tonight, I bring to you the annual settlement for taxes for fiscal year 2324. After July 1st, 2024, and before being charged with the taxes to collect for fiscal year 2425, the tax collector is required to give a sworn statement to the Board of County Commissioners as to the annual settlement statement in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 105, 373A. A list of unpaid accounts is available for public inspection at the tax office and the clerk's office. It's my recommendation that the board approve the annual settlement of taxes for fiscal year 2324 as presented.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and second, if we could vote. All right, Mr. Prune, monthly financial report.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Nonley, Board of Commissioners, and Madam Manager. Tonight, I bring you the June 24, 2024 financial report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. As of June 30 of 2024, we were 12 months into the fiscal year or 100% of the year. For the General Fund, we collected 91.3% of anticipated revenues and spent 90.9% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we collected 99.3% and spent 84%. EMS, we collected 113.3% and spent 93.3%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
So, move.
We have a motion and second, if we could vote.
I know we voted, but I have a question if you don't mind. When you have 84% for the, that you've actually spent, you collected 99, what happens to the rest of the money? That other 15%?
Correct, for the Solid Waste Fund, we're still working this month to close out revenues and expenditures that still come in, that were actually incurred before June 30. So, as far as revenues, most of that's already in, but the 84% will still go up. But any money left over will fall back to their fund balance that the board can use in future years.
For solid waste, it's an enterprise fund, so it will remain within that fund for general government departments, and the sheriff, it falls back to your general fund balance.
Mr. Huggins?
Not for Sam, I'm sorry, I want to go back and say something to Russell.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Oh, did we, we finished the vote on that? Okay, I just want to say, ask you about calls from residents about the tax letters and all that. I know we all probably got some phone calls and all, so I just want to know how that went.
Yes, ma'am, last week, I think a lot of the notices hit the mail, probably Monday, Tuesday of the week. We talked to a lot of citizens that said, I think the phones have calmed down a little bit, but I think they were waiting like 40 minutes, couldn't get through. But staff has been trying to work through to return those calls as quick as possible. A lot of the questions we have received is going to be in regards to could they appeal their property? And unfortunately, if they did not have a timely filed appeal, that time window is closed, but they can still file their appeal, they can bring that to the board equalization review. If they find that they have any statutory findings to hear it, they can. But I have been encouraging citizens to go ahead and file their appeal. If they're gonna file one for '24, to go ahead and file one for '25 as well. So, if the board does find that it's untimely, their appeal is in place for 2025. And so, that's kind of been where we're at now, working, just kind of working through that particular process with the taxpayers. We're still having meetings, we've got them scheduled out through the end of the year. I think I've got hearings scheduled through October, so the staff is still working through those. Our goal is to finish, I think we've got about 500 appeals left that was timely filed, to try to work through those by the end of August. So, citizens know that, you know, either we can try to, if we believe their value, get a consent letter, get a bill adjusted as quick as possible, and if not, they know what their hearing date is, so they can come to the board and present their appeal at that point.
Okay, well, I've asked the county manager to reach out to you about a situation with constituents, so I hope we can get that looked into and taken care of. So, you don't have to answer right here, but.
Okay.
Russell and Sam and I talked about it today.
Yes, ma'am. And so, we're working on getting that, getting a report or some type of response back to that citizen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. All right, we'll move on to Manager Gallagher, manager's report.
Yep, I have a few items for you this evening. Your next meeting dates are August 5th and August 19 at 6 o'clock in this auditorium. Item B, your employee service awards will be tomorrow morning in this room at 8:00 a.m. And pursuant to our new practice, we don't have folks come after hours to receive the reports, they'll come in the morning for breakfast, we encourage all of you to attend for that. But we have had employees say that they do like when their name is read out on television. And so, if I could, if you'll indulge me for a minute to read through those names. Receiving five years of service award are James Baker in the sheriff's office, Dominic Battle in detention, Ashley Dillahun in detention, Kimberly Dozier in social services, Jennifer Garrison in social services, Tanya Harris in the sheriff's office, Tajadeen Jefferson in social services, Mary Land in social services, and Ataji Simmons in detention. With 10 years of service tomorrow morning, we'll be celebrating Marisol Barr in social services, Justin Best in the sheriff's office, Jason Collins in the sheriff's office, Amanda Garcia in social services, and Terry Quinn in public health. Celebrating 15 years of service, Thomas Corpru in detention, William Cowley in detention, Charles Kraft in detention, William Early in the sheriff's office, Purnell Elliott in detention, Ross Crager in detention, Angela Simpson in social services, Ronnie Steps in detention, and Christopher Ruler in detention. Celebrating 20 years of service are Pamela Davis in management information systems and Kathy Dixon in public health. 25 years of service will be celebrated by Timothy Dotry in the sheriff's office, Wileene Peel in detention, Brandon Speller in the sheriff's office, and Kenneth Waters in the sheriff's office. And then we have one-third a year award recipient tomorrow morning to celebrate, Timothy Daniels in Buildings and Grounds. So, that group of employees are invited for breakfast in the morning to celebrate that important milestone. Our employees continue to be our most valuable resource, and we love celebrating them. Item C, August 8th to 10th is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Forsyth County, for those who are registered, just a reminder of that date. Item D, according to your rules of procedure, when the chairman signs a proclamation, we announce it at the next board meeting. Your chair did sign a proclamation recognizing the Greenville Industrial, Charles M. Epps High School National Alumni Association 44th Annual School Reunion, and that took place July 5th to 7th here in Pitt County, and that proclamation was shared for that event. Item E is an exciting event news, that's the America 250 Grant. So, this year, we're celebrating 250 years of America. And Jessica Williams, who is the coordinator for the Human Relations Commission, took the initiative to apply for a $10,000 grant under the America 250 NC Grant Program. On April 15th, this Board of County Commissioners, by resolution, granted permission for Jessica to apply for that grant. She submitted it on May 17th, and on June 13th, we were awarded the $10,000. So, we were thrilled for her efforts, and you'll see in your items for consent, a budget amendment to log that money onto the books, and those monies will be used for eligible activities, which include educational outreach, essay contests about the America 250 celebration, and listening sessions throughout the county. So, we're thrilled that Jessica took that initiative and was successful in that effort. Also, wanted to announce and thrilled that through the assistance of ECU, East Carolina University, and the Public Health Department, we were awarded a Digital Champions Grant. And the Digital Champions Grant is a grant that was awarded through the Department of Information Technology. It's for computers, equipment, broadband costs for the pit stop location. If you recall, that's the rural clinic multi-specialty spot that we have in Bethel. And it'll also cover a percentage of staff time, printers, copiers, wall TVs, telehealth equipment, and other items for the Bethel pit stop and possible future expansion sites. That was done, Dr. Angela Lampson with East Carolina University did some of the heavy lifting on that grant, and we are pleased that that will bring to Pitt County government for this purpose So, we were pleased to see those efforts and application rewarded. Then I always like to shout out some of the awards that are received by our very own employees. Mike Taylor, your deputy county manager and chief information officer, received the Digital County Survey Award when we were in Hillsborough County, Florida, the other week, recognizing Pitt County's innovation and efforts in digital technology. I was thrilled to be there, to see him receive that award and give Pitt County that national recognition for our efforts in information technology. Kelly Andrews, our Pitt County Economic Development Director, received last month the North Carolina Economic Development Association Developer of the Year Award, a very competitive process, and she was presented with that award on June 26th in Wilmington this year. And her work continues to be, the excellence in her work continues to be demonstrated. She has been in our economic development office since 2006, bringing in over $450 million in capital investment and over 1,000 new jobs, including the two most recent announcements from Boviet Solar and Nipro, which we celebrated just the other week. And then our finance office received for the 34th consecutive year the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Sam and his team continue to do exemplary work. The standards for this award keep getting harder and harder, and we keep meeting that bar. And so, I'm thrilled at the work of the financial services team to receive that recognition for the 34th year in a row. Round of applause for those. Two quick things to add before we get to the NACO conference reports this morning to let you all know that your own Commissioner Anne Huggins was unanimously approved at the NCAA District 2 meeting this morning as the NCAA District 2 representative. So, we are thrilled for her to assume that role effective immediately, is what they said.
You getting a big pay increase out of it?
And also, there, it's on your items for consent, but a commissioner asked that I highlight these, that within your items for consent, there will be certificates, although they're not present, approved for us to send to Dr. Lenker and Dr. Rouse for their exemplary service in their roles as superintendent and president of our community college. Once you approve those in your items for consent, they will be delivered to them. But they have received many, many awards and recognitions, and were not able to be here this evening, and they were okay with that approach.
Could they be presented like at a board meeting? Is there one that's going to be held?
We can certainly reach out to them about it, we were not able to coordinate, and I think they were pleased to receive it in the mail.
Okay.
But we did try that first.
Okay, thank you.
We had asked both of them if they could be here this evening, and they weren't able to be. And then the last thing on my manager's report are your NACO annual conference reports, if any commissioners in attendance wanted to share anything from that conference.
I wrote mine out because.
Mary Perkins-Williams?
Thank you. It was sort of long, it was an all-day event, and I wanted this group to know that I attended all-day Community Economic and Workforce Development, the Policy Steering Committee. And this session was all-day, and it was very, very interesting. It was a packed house, and I'm just, I'm not going to read this, I'm going to give it to Kimberly to include, so everybody can see what I said. I couldn't catch it all because I'm not someone who can take it shorthand. But they talked a lot about, I can give you the topics, who owns America? And then advancing housing affordability through innovations. And they talked about how you recruit for the WIOA program, and they had recruiters and that sort of thing. There was panel discussion, and it was a very, very good meeting. Also, at the very end, they talked about the policy resolution, the impacts. One of the things they talked about was the fact that mobile homes have, meet the codes in the manufacturing development company. But the housing, affordable housing does not. It goes from the builder to the partnership of the builder as to what they want to do. And that seemed, it was a lot of discussion about that because it seemed like it was a problem. So, here's my report, and I wrote my notes on the back, but they don't make any difference. So, I'll just send that. If there's any questions, Kimberly, I can send this on to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, Commissioner and Lieutenant Huggins.
Well, first of all, I want to say that I was your voting delegate.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
And I delivered our three votes for the North Carolina Mecklenburg-Chairman, George Dunlap, winner of the second VP, Vice President of the National Association of County Commissioners. So, and he had two opponents, but he won overwhelmingly. So, I attended, you know, several sessions, I attended the open session and the Rural Action Caucus Business Meeting, the Southern Regional Caucus, and Women's for NACO, and some of the workshops, trends on county housing affordability and panel discussion on homelessness. And so, the county approach to combating youth substance use disorder and counties improving health services. Making the most of rural development and Medicaid impact on rural communities, the effective opioid disposal. And the one on homelessness, that was a very, that workshop was very engaging on food insecurity and homelessness, in which they said, you know, food is medicine, is medicine and not just calories, and that homelessness, you know, is a healthcare issue. So, people were really engaged in that discussion, talking about fast food places on every corner, and we're talking about being healthy, healthy rather, teaching our youth how to have a garden to raise food, and teaching people how to prepare food. So, you know, homelessness is a healthcare issue. And we, as a nation, we're not doing a good job, you know, a very good job. a good job, you know, very good job on that. And counties, we as a county have a role in that, you know. A lot of people, they say, we're losing, we're losing the fight on homelessness and food insecurity. We're losing the fight on it. You know, the state's Supreme Courts have passed laws against people sleeping in public, you know. So, we have to, we as county, you know, we have to push back on those laws, you know, ones that. So, that's just some of the workshops and the meetings that I attended. But I was happy to, you know, give you a vote on behalf of you. So, three votes I cast for Pitt County.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will briefly state that it is always wonderful to get to meet with Commissioners across the country, which the NACO National Conference allows us to do, with all the toxicity in government. A lot of times, you think your local leaders are the ones that are least partisan and most connected with the people. And this event yearly really reinforces that. And the group as a whole really goes to fight for the individuals, all of our residents, year in and year out in Washington, in the halls that you can't reach. And I am proud to serve on a commission that was so well-represented at the National Conference, and can say that it has noticed that Pitt County is engaged in a player in the state of North Carolina. And it is a huge deal that we will, in three years now, have the sitting president from the state of North Carolina at the top of our organization, which is a really big deal for the state as we are moving and growing. So, it was a fantastic conference. It reinforces what's good about service and all the people that serve at this level. So, I thank my fellow Commissioners there with me. And that's it. And our staff as well, who also knocks it out of the park all the time.
Yes, yes.
I was not going to forget the staff.
You forgot them.
Not going to take the staff from there. But no, and our staff, I think Mike, Mike is out here with MIS, and he always goes a day early to collect and read the rewards for all the good work that he does. But really, I'll just say this last thing, and then I'll do it to a close. The encouraging thing too is, and I neglected to mention staff because a lot of times we'll go to a seminar, and we'll hear what the best practices are. And we are doing it in Pitt County. Our management and our staff are doing it. And that's almost without exception. So, it's something that we all can be very proud of, and thank you. All right.
That's all that I have for my report.
Thank you. All right, move to items for consent.
I moved up. We approved the items in the consent call.
Second.
We have a motion and second. We can vote.
Ready to get home now.
All right. Moving right on, we'll move to items for decision. We will go to Pre-Trial Services Advisory Board Report and Program Recommendations, and we have a number of officials with us. So, good to see you all.
They are all in suits.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Commissioners. As you know, I'm Marvin Blunt. I'm the Senior Resident Superior Court Judge from here in Pitt County, and I'm joined with some of the members of the Pre-Trial Services Advisory Board. We have Tapley Coyle, who's with the Public Defender's Office, our DA, Mr. Ferris Dixon, and then our special guest is Ms. Jessica Ireland. She's an expert on the topic, and she's going to talk about the substance of the report and the recommendations. But first, I have to thank you for being supportive of the courthouse. We try not to bother you very much, but when we do, you're very responsive, and we do appreciate it. It's usually air-conditioning or an elevator, but for the most part, we're very appreciative of the support that the county provides. I'm proud of our courthouse. I'm proud of our courthouse community. And we have a beautiful facility, and thanks for all that you do. I do want to thank you for pursuing discussions and opportunities with the pre-trial services program. I know that we did it the right way. Two years ago, the Commissioners funded a study to look at opportunities and the data in Pitt County to see what opportunities there would or could be for a pre-trial services program. Now, Commissioner Coulson, I remember the first time I was here, it's been a while because Glenn Webb was sitting right there, I think. But when I first presented this to you folks, and that was before COVID, so we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of time under our belt. But I'm still committed to it. I still believe it's the right thing to do. And as you all know, and I know the Managers kept you informed, and it's been somewhat of a long process, but as I said, I believe we've done it the right way. The pre-trial services program is a program designed for low-level, nonviolent offenders who are arrested, and after their arrest, they're screened for eligibility. And if they're eligible for the program, and this is, like I said, low-level offenders and low-level offenses, we're going to start out in that range. And when someone is determined to be eligible, they are eligible for release but with supervision. And the level of supervision is determined by a screening tool that Jessica Ireland, she's going to talk about, that's used nationwide. I know that, you know, there's often reluctance, or people hear that, well, why are we letting people out? You know, why are we letting people out of jail because they've been, you know, charged with a crime? Well, under the law in our country, the only way that you can keep someone confined is if they are a danger to society, and if they're unlikely to show up in court. So, if someone is not a danger to society, and they're likely to show up, the law says that you're to use the least restrictive means to hold those in custody. And so, what pre-trial release can do, and will do, I believe, is will allow these low-level offenders to, who are eligible to be released but with supervision. And the difference is, you know, somebody could get charged, wealthy individual could get charged with a serious crime and have a high bond put on it, he or she, they pay the bond, they're out, no supervision. So, that's one of the benefits of pre-trial release. These individuals are getting out with supervision. If they don't comply, then they're rearrested and put back in jail. But there's some other, I think, benefits that we've talked about before in the past. I do believe it'll reduce your jail population. I think that it will allow the sheriff to focus on individuals who probably need more attention than these individuals who are being released. Also, there's going to be some opportunities, maybe not initially, but I know we're going to have screening for mental health issues and substance abuse. That's kind of the goal in that process of supervision, to hopefully get it, what may be root problems and causes, to keep people from reoffending and put back in jail. So, I have said enough at this point. I'm going to let Mr. Dixon speak for a moment, too. We've got a good, we've got a good team at the courthouse. We get a lot of things done. And I'm proud of what we do. I will share this. I know y'all, I'm proud of the work he's been doing with the Veterans Treatment Court. That's, he's made a lot of progress, and I give him all the credit for that. Second, in Raleigh, they study numbers county by county, statistics for all areas of court cases. And I will tell you that Pitt County, we have some of the best in the state, best in the state. Our backlog, since COVID, criminal backlog is down 40% in Superior Court.
Wow.
And the average is about, I think, 8%. And our civil backlog is down 20%, and the state average is an increase of 29%.
Wow.
So, we're moving cases. But I want to thank y'all again. Jessica Ireland is, we're so lucky to have her. She's an expert in this field. This is what she does. She's from Mecklenburg County. She's from Charlotte. She worked in the pre-trial services program in Mecklenburg for a number of years. She's now with the Center for Effective Public Policy. And she flew in from Ohio to be here tonight. She has, they do consulting nationwide. So, the money that y'all agreed to spend earlier for the report and the study initially, Jessica's the one that directed it, and with the help of Jesse Smith, who I know some of you know, also with the UNC School of Government, that's how we ended up with Jessica Ireland. So, I'm a big fan. Thank y'all again. I'm going to let the DA speak, and I'm going to sit down.
As you're aware, this was an initiative that was brought to you by Judge, our Senior Resident Superior Court Judge, Judge Blunt. This is a, not, this is a policy for the court system and for Pitt County. We've had comments about what homelessness can do and bring people into the court system. What we're trying to do is address those people with minor offenses that come into the court system and to reduce recidivism. And ideally, the contact with the court system will be the last. Working with Mr. Coyle, who's also with the Public Defender's Office, we try and do our best to process cases in a manner that helps people to get back on their feet, such that they can become productive, support their own families, have jobs, and become productive citizens. We really appreciate what Ms. Ireland's been doing with us. She's been guiding us through this process, along with Ms. Jesse Smith. And the District Attorney's Office is holdhardly behind this. It does no good for anybody to have somebody with minor offenses sitting in jail. It prevents them from being able to hire their own counsel, from representing themselves if they want to, or likely to prepare themselves for court by doing, setting up some things in place, such as we have diversion programs to try and help guide people back out of the court system. And this gives them the opportunity to get there at an early step. And hopefully, as I said, make this just a one-time visit with us.
You ready to talk about, or hear about the recommendations?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, we'll go ahead and jump right here. So, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and share the recommendations from the Pre-Trial Services Advisory Board, or PTSAB for short. Working with such a committed and dedicated group of criminal justice stakeholders really has been a privilege. The PTSAB has been meeting since March and has carefully considered what a pre-trial program in Pitt County should look like. At their request, I am going to share the recommendations that they came up with tonight, and I'll also highlight some of the data that they discussed. And certainly feel free to jump in at any point. To get started, I want to share data on Pitt County jail bookings. The UNC Criminal Justice Innovation Lab compiled this data. It covers the three-and-a-half-year period between January 2019 and August 2022. This data tells us that the vast majority of jail bookings in Pitt County are for pre-trial offenses. 76% or 20,690, to be exact. These numbers are significant because they highlight the need for a pre-trial program. The second chart examines highest charges for pre-trial bookings. The three largest groups are felony, non-traffic misdemeanor, and failure to appear. This highlights who a pre-trial program can serve. And I want you to keep these numbers in mind because we're going to come back to them in a little bit. So, there's five recommendations that they have spent a lot of time carefully considering. The first is implement a dedicated pre-trial services program. First and foremost, yes, the recommendation is that they want to have a pre-trial services program that serves two functions. First is assist judicial officers in making informed release decisions that promote court appearance and public safety. And second, to offer support to those released who would benefit from services. They're what you just talked about, right? People with mental health, homelessness, all of that. So, we'll talk more about these two functions in a minute. The PTSAB spent time considering where to house the pre-trial program, and unanimously felt the best placement was a department or division within the county. This allows for neutrality in the delivery of services. In making this decision, I shared with the Advisory Board a recent survey that Jesse Smith actually completed that talked about where pre-trial programs are most often housed. And what you find within North Carolina is for jurisdictions that have, what I say, more robust programs, you do find that they are most often housed within the county. The local pre-trial program also needs physical space, right? They need someplace to work. Ideally, this would be in or as close to the courthouse as possible. This is important because pre-trial staff can easily meet with clients before and after court, which is why it makes that location so important. And lastly, you would need a full-time manager to run the pre-trial program. The second recommendation, and this is what Judge Blunt alluded to, is to implement an actuarial pre-trial assessment tool. So, when I say actuarial, what I mean is a tool that has been statistically validated to predict pre-trial outcomes. And when we talk about pre-trial outcomes, we mean appearing in court and not being rearrested during the pre-trial phase. So, in meeting with the Advisory Board, I presented them with three of the most common actuarial tools that are used in the pre-trial field, and they decided that the Public Safety Assessment, or PSA, was the best fit for Pitt County. The PSA was nationally developed and validated, and is used in many jurisdictions nationwide, as well as in North Carolina. Buncombe, Durham, Mecklenburg, and Wake are all currently using the PSA. New Hanover, Orange, Chatham, and Guilford are all in various stages of implementation. The PSA predicts three separate pre-trial outcomes, including the likelihood the person will appear in court, the likelihood they will remain arrest-free, and the likelihood they will remain violent arrest-free. This tool is different than the other ones that I shared with the advisory group because it provides separate scores for each of those outcomes, where other pre-trial assessment tools only provide one composite score that summarizes that. Two primary reasons the PSA was selected are its ability to predict pre-trial outcomes separately, like I just noted, and the ability to complete the assessment without a face-to-face interview. The advisory group initially recommends completing assessments only on those charged with misdemeanor offenses and those charged with H and I felonies. So, what it would currently exclude is those charged with higher felonies, such as murder, rape, or robbery, those charged with domestic violence, and those charged with driving well-impaired. The advisory group felt it was important to start smaller, measure success, and then expand. Staff are needed to implement the PSA. In addition, the assessment requires a thorough review of local, state, and national criminal history, so they would need access to those records. Moving on to the third recommendation, and that is to really look at effective pre-trial supervision practices. And I have to tell them, I really enjoyed the discussion that we had around this recommendation. I think it was one of the most engaging, and quite frankly, just really thoughtful conversations in terms of what does this look like in Pitt County? Really, how can you provide strategies to help your residents? So, again, those that would be eligible for supervision are going to be the same group that I mentioned would be assessed. So, it would not include the higher-level felonies, the DWI, or the domestic violence. You know, during this process, I shared with the Advisory Board that research in the pre-trial field is very clear, that reminding individuals of court increases the likelihood that they will appear. So, with this in mind, the Board made the recommendation to use evidence-based strategies that promote court appearance. What that means is they would use the case managers to make live calls. So, the research is very clear. If you make a live call, you remind someone of court, it increases the likelihood that they'll appear. So, this is where I want you to go back and think about that data that I showed earlier, right? 23% of local bookings here in Pitt County were for failure to appear. So, having a pre-trial program that makes court reminder calls is one way the program can have a significant impact in your jurisdiction. But that's not it. The Advisory Board continued to think of more strategies. So, another one that they thought of, and I thought this was fantastic, is unanimously that they wanted equal access. And what that means is that they need translation services. Not everyone that comes into contact at the jail speaks English, and so they didn't want to limit the services to only those that spoke English. So, they have a plan where they would be able to provide services regardless of your language, so that would not be a barrier. Just as important... Just as important is the concept of providing supportive service referrals when appropriate. It is becoming more common in the pretrial field to meet people where they are and encourage supportive services that promote pretrial success and positive behavior. This is another place where you can look specifically at your local pretrial data, and what we found in that three-and-a-half-year period is that 35% of people booked into jail had more than one booking within that period. That population could potentially benefit from supportive services to interrupt the cycle of criminal justice involvement. Lastly, providing effective supervision strategies, it does require staff resources. Pitt County is very fortunate because it has strong colleges and universities, and the advisory board envisions this is an opportunity to develop partnerships and possible internships as well. These partnerships and full-time case managers would be paramount in really providing effective The fourth one, two more recommendations to go. The fourth recommendation looks at key pretrial performance measures. Everyone on the advisory board recognizes the need to monitor performance and ensure that policies and practices implemented function as anticipated and produce the desired results. Since the goal in the pretrial phase is to appear in court and not get rearrested, it was logical that these be the primary performance measures. But let me tell you, the advisory board went further, and what they said is, we actually want to know more detailed information about failure to appear and rearrest. And so, you can see, there's a host of other things that they would want to look at, including, what's the length of time when someone is on pretrial release and they fail? And with that deeper understanding and data, they would then be able to further identify effective supervision strategies to really work with that population. The last recommendation centers on developing a means to gather feedback from program participants regarding the services they received. And I have to tell you, the advisory group thoughtfully thought of this all on their own. Mr. Dixon, I think it was you, actually, that brought this idea to the group. And I, I think it's fantastic, because what it's saying is, not only do we want to quantify our success by looking at, you know, our rearrest rate and what I would call your public safety rate or your appearance rate, but you also want to look at qualitatively, how are those people that are benefiting from the services? Is it helping them? What do they think? And so, you can take the quantitative and the qualitative and continue to use that to make improvement. So, I thought that was fantastic, that they came up with that, and it's one I'm gonna use when I continue to work with jurisdictions across the country. So, the last recommendation is convene system-wide pretrial educational opportunities. As the pretrial program is further developed and implemented, the advisory board recognizes the need to provide ongoing education to system stakeholders and the community. Identifying communication activities before implementing any changes will help increase support for pretrial improvements and ultimately create a more transparent system. Lastly, the advisory board discussed the immense value of visiting other North Carolina jurisdictions that have made pretrial advancements, especially those with pretrial programs similar to the one they envisioned for Pitt County. Kind of the same benefit, Commissioner, you said, when you go to NACO, right? It's, it's a great opportunity to learn from others. So, hopefully, as you can see, the PTSAB has carefully considered these recommendations. They reviewed local data, they talked about best practices, and they had thoughtful and engaging conversations. I am honestly extremely confident, I know that their recommendations helped to serve Pitt County implement a fair, effective, and efficient pretrial program. So, those are their recommendations. I don't know if there's any questions?
I have one.
Mr. Perkins Williams.
I was looking at, and I perused through these, um, this document on page 175, or first and second on the, um, the Pretrial Services Advisory Board document. I looked at the contents of the, um, the membership to include, and I was looking at, um, the at-large member, which is the only place where you may have a female on this board.
We have a female applicant now.
Oh, what, what'd you say?
We have a female applicant for the magistrate now.
Okay. That was something that I thought should happen.
Also, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, there actually, I just realized, it looks like there's this judge and a bunch of lawyers up here.
That's right.
But there's members of law enforcement that were also a part of the board, major laws from the Greenwood Police Department, and major orders, I believe, from the Pitt County Sheriff's Department, were members of the board. And actually, they engaged in that conversation we had about how to figure out why FTA's occur, and they actually gave us a lot of information about what would happen when they would go and arrest somebody who had missed court, the kind of responses they got. And they were very detailed in this, involved in this conversation.
Because I thought, you know, sometime women, they got to see to the children getting here, and they gotta, we have a lot of single parents, women, and that might be one of the reasons they might miss their trial or that, because it, and I was hoping that I would see that, because I can't tell by the name that they were there, Judge Blunt. I can't tell from names nowadays as to the, I won't say sex, but whatever it is, the membership differences and equity.
Mr. Colson?
Is there any way you could go back to, I believe it was your second slide? Where it had the pie chart? It showed how many?
Yeah, are we gonna get these slides?
Arrests have been, or whatever. It seemed like an awfully high number.
This one, or the one that broke it down a little more?
I can't see it.
We don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Jessica, if you'd just hold on one second, we're just getting our tech set up here.
Here it is.
Thank you.
20,000 is three-quarters, so there's 25, 26,000 pretrial bookings in a county that has a population that's only about three times that size, or maybe four times that size.
So, keep in mind, that was over a three-and-a-half-year period.
Oh.
It wasn't one year.
All right. And the other thing is, all those things that you talked about doing, they sound great. I'm looking at the number of people here, five. How are five people gonna be able to do all that?
That's a great question.
And because, you see, one of the things that I have found, I continue to remind my board members, and they're happy to hear this, that I'm lame duck. I'm not gonna be here much longer. But one of the things I have found in my 20 years as a county commissioner, which I believe is long enough to be a county commissioner, uh, is things like this, it's like a slippery slope. Five years from now, are we gonna be talking about 22 people, and the budget's gonna be $3.4 million? What's gonna prevent that slippery slope from happening?
I think that's a great question, and that's why, by ordinance you passed the Pretrial Services Advisory Board, is to make sure that doesn't happen, because not everyone is a good candidate for pretrial supervision. Some people should be released and don't need services, and like the judge said, some do present a danger to the community and should not be on those services. How we came up with, how I came up with those numbers is, again, this has been a long process for you all. So, it started in 2022, when Jesse Smith was able to pull your local data. So, we were able to really call out what that anticipated number would be. So, that 20,690 is everyone over the three-year period. What then we looked at is the group that they're interested in actually providing the services to, which was the lower-level offenses and misdemeanor. And so, you're not doing the assessment on all of those. And so, when you do the incremental math, it breaks down to around 12 a day. Before I have this job, when I was in Mecklenburg County, I was the Director of Pretrial Services. When we were short-staffed, I did assessments, so I can tell you firsthand, I know how long they take. And so, it, using that, you know, how much time it takes to complete the assessment, how many we anticipate you would have a day, that's how we were able to come up with the number to, to do the assessment. In terms of how many we thought we would need for case management services, again, the expectation is not that all of those people be referred to pretrial. That's where we would say, Judge Blunt, the court's doing something wrong, right? So, this group will really have to decide, you know, once you complete the public safety assessment and it provides you, what is that likelihood of success with those three skills we talked about? If someone has a high likelihood of success, what we would say is, pretrial's not even appropriate. You want to use your limited county resources for those where you have the ability to make the most impact. So, I think, Commissioner, that's what stops it from growing. A county this size, to say, you know, you would need 22 staff, I would say off the bat, you're doing something wrong, because you shouldn't. You really shouldn't.
Well, that's government.
Let me, I would clarify something, too. So, because we talked about this, but it's a difficult, I mean, it's a lot to get your arms around, but it, in essence, with someone, for example, someone is charged with a low-level felony that's eligible, a breaking and entering a motor vehicle, just going into a car is a Class I felony. And if that person that broke into the vehicle is somebody that's been to prison five times and has a record a page long, and I see him all the time, he's not, he or she's not even gonna, they're not gonna qualify for it, because the risk, the safety risk would exclude them. And, and if it's someone who commits a dangerous offense, an armed robbery, or...
So, then you're the filter?
They would what?
You're the filter?
No, the, the program, it's a, it is a objective.
Okay.
Program where they enter in, I mean, it's, it's a, it's done, I mean, she can explain more, but I'm giving you an example of, of who would be eligible.
One of the things that I look at, when I hear misdemeanor, I think, okay, it's not that serious. When I hear felony, all of a sudden, my antenna goes up and it says, hey, that's a little bit more serious. And I don't know what H and I felony is, but let's say the program goes through and is doing marvelous, and then all of a sudden, somebody slips through the crack, convinces you of everything that, that you need to do, and then they go out and they murder somebody. Now, we got a county program that has allowed that person to be out when he should have been in jail. Does that put the county at risk?
The judge makes the final decision.
Does that put the county at risk?
Pretrial Services makes a recommendation based on the assessment, when the individual has gone through the assessment, and they determine that based on this assessment, that they are a low-risk of threat and have a high likelihood of return. And people, people reoffend all the time. I mean, like I said before, you've got...
But you're not answering my question. I'm, I'm talking about the guy that slips through the crack, it's, and then they go out and murder somebody. Because it's a program that's being sponsored and funded by county dollars, is the county more at risk of a, of a lawsuit, where whoever was murdered, their family coming back and saying, hey, you guys messed up?
I think the judge is the one that approves the, makes the, makes the release condition. It's no different than any other situation, except now, we've got more data and more information available for those individuals to make an informed decision on what bond or release conditions that they may have. But the judge is the one that makes the decision. So, the pretrial, once they're assessed, they go in front of a judge at an initial court appearance, and the pretrial assessment individual reports to the judge, they meet this criteria, if they're a low level, or they're a medium level, or they're on the high-range level. And, and if they're on the high, high-range level, they may need more supervision than someone that's on, on the low level. But it's still, it's a recommendation to the judge and the court about whether or not they're gonna be eligible, whether they're gonna be, be released at all. So, it's not, it's, that decision's not made by the county, it's made by the court.
I'm not saying it's made by the county. I'm asking, will the county be more liable? You don't think so?
I don't think so. I don't, I actually think the county may be less liable, because now the courts are making their own decisions without the support of a pretrial services team and without the support of this PSA assessment tool.
That's a good argument. Okay, I'll buy that.
Okay. I'll be quiet.
Mr. Floyd Huggins, did you have a question?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Data and statistics. How long is it preserved? I'm always thinking about research, and we have a university and a very good college system here at Pitt. So, I'm, I'm looking at data and looking at history and ongoing cause and effect and the history of it. How long is it preserved?
I'm, I'm gonna make a prediction.
Oh, Lord.
Okay? I'm gonna predict that there's some partners that are going to assist us in the future to help us even further study the data that we have now. We've at least, by doing the report that we've done, we've looked at the data for over a three and three-and-a-half-year period, so you've got a baseline. Most of the jurisdictions that adopt these programs, they don't go through that level of due diligence. I think they just know it's a, they believe it's a good idea and it's something worthwhile. Y'all chose to see what was worthwhile about it in that report. So, we've already got data now as a baseline, and like I said, I'm making a prediction that there's gonna be...
But it is gonna be ongoing.
Some partnership opportunities for some more studying, because we want it to be successful.
Yes.
And that's why we want to start small and do what we can and get, for lack of a better word, low-hand group, people that probably don't need to be in jail because they're not dangerous and they're likely to appear in court, sitting there for days, weeks, or months. And, um, we have a mechanism to release them, but with supervision, with some level of supervision. What else I can say? Thank you for all of y'all's...
Thank you, Judge Blunt, and thank you, Jessica Ireland and Ferris and Tappin for all of your diligent work, and the entire advisory board for the really important work that you've done on this. Thank you so much. And, uh, board, do we have any, do we have a motion?
Do we?
Do we need a motion to, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
So, we've got, we've got a motion, a second, I believe.
Mr. Vice President, if I could just clarify, um, in your package, we would, I would recommend a motion to approve the recommendations, and then have this group bring back to you a very detailed budget within available funds that have been budgeted for the elements of the program and a timeline for what we can put into place within available funds, and ask them to bring that back at a future meeting.
So, if I hear correctly, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the recommendations and have, have the advisory board bring back a detailed budget within available funds for approval?
I accept whatever it is, whether I made a motion or the second.
Okay.
Is that all right with you all?
Let's vote.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you, David.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And while you're voting, if I could just say one more thing about why we're so grateful for Jessica Ireland. You may recall that we received a grant from the Center for Effective Public Policy, and so, all of her services in guiding this board have been at no cost directly to Pitt County government, and we're so appreciative for that grant, and that that covered her coming here this evening as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We're lucky to have her.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Moving on to Chief K. Part, authorized request for proposals for the inmate healthcare contract. Now, we have been at this, actually, Chief K. Part, we've been at this for about two hours and 10 minutes. If we'd like to take a, a brief break, would we like to?
Mr. Chairman, I hear the thundering outside, and I know there's some lightning.
Let's take, let's take a brief, about a three-minute break. Chief K. Part, if you'll bear with us just a moment.
Okay.
And we'll get you right back up here. Okay, thank you. We'll stand in recess for three minutes. We'll stand in recess for three minutes. All right.
We have...
Looks like we're back. Chief K. Part?
Yes, sir. So, good evening again. I'm back, Chief K. Part, Chief of Detention Services. I'm here for an item for decision tonight for the approved release of the request of, for proposal, I'm sorry, proposal for the inmate healthcare contract for year 2025. I'll go ahead and start. So, the current vendor for the inmate healthcare services is WellPath. A provision of this contract allows the vendors to request a yearly price increase up to 5%. The 5% increase was requested and approved for the fiscal year 2025. But however, the vendor has recently requested an additional 22% on top of the given 5%. Vendor stated that if denied 22% increase, they would terminate the existing contract. In order to be a good steward, or to be good stewards of Pitt County funds, it was decided that the best course of action would be to do a request for a proposal, which is a RFP, for the jail health services. We attached with this agenda, based on the timeline, our goal is to have this advertised in the Daily Reflector the first week of August. And with the RFP opening on August 19th and closing on September 16th, the RFP received will be considered against the criteria, and the lowest responsive and the most responsible proposal will be presented to the Board of Commissioners for review and approval to award the contract on October 7th of 2024. Tentative contract start date would be November 1st of 2024 and end June 30th of 2027, with an option to renew for an additional term of up to three years. Recommend approval for request for RFP and timeline for the RFP for inmate healthcare services. I will say that we've completed two years of the three-year medical contract with WellPath being our provider. We've been satisfied with some of the services that we've received. WellPath is proposing that 22% increase on a jail medical contract. Obviously, that price raises huge concerns for us as well. And that's why we requested it be sent out for RFP. The previous year cost for the medical contract was $3,261,000. With a 5% increase based on CPI for year 2024-25, approved by the board, was a 3.5 million and, 3.5, $3,500,085,000 to total with the safekeeping. Cost proposal for year 2024-25 is $3,991,299 at WellPath request for the annual payment. We're a decision right now where we're, we're challenged with a 22% increase that is being asked by WellPath. 22% increase is significant. We do recognize and understand that, and that's why we requested to send it out for RFP. Any questions?
Commissioner Coulson, we'll start down here.
Well, I guess, my feelings are that WellPath was brought here because of the sheriff. And if they want extra money and so on, I think it ought to come out of sheriff's budget. She created this. Why are you presenting this and not her? Earlier today, we heard of a bunch of people coming up here, talking about how great the sheriff is. And yet, and I'm, I'm going to express my feelings openly here because, again, I will mention, I am lame duck, and I can share with the world what I really think. Probably would have anyway. But when I go, when I see the sheriff on social media, now here's a sheriff on social media badmouthing the members of this board, criticizing us for problems sometimes that she's created. And her attitude towards us, quite frankly, is hateful. She comes up there, she'll introduce somebody, she might have just introduced you tonight, and she turns around, go sit down, let somebody else do the talking. That, to me, is not leadership. She has not exempted, been exemplary, exemplary, in my opinion, as far as what she can and can't do. Now, as far as this goes, when I look at this, and I see economic inflation, and then they take the, the staffing costs on top of that, and then this, whatever social inflation is, that's taking numbers and piling them up on top of each other to try to justify, if you look at the, the numbers, it came out to, what, 29% or, or something? It's ridiculous. I don't even know why they had the guts to present this, because I'll vote against it. Anyway, so... Where is the sheriff?
She couldn't be here tonight, sir.
I, it's funny about that. She can't always not be here. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to accept the report from you because, and I don't mean any disrespect. But I would like to see the, the lady come up here and have the guts to stand before us and ask for things, rather than send other people to do the battle for her.
With all respect, sir.
I can go on, but I'll end it with this.
Let's, um, let's just try to keep it on jail medical.
This is jail medical. No, 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 Chris, this is jail medical, and it's related to this. And it, she brought WellPath to us. We had a, a local entity that was doing a really good service for the county. She insisted upon WellPath. She did.
Mr. Floyd Huggins?
Um, I, I heard you say that you were satisfied with some of the services of WellPath.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, um, can you talk about, well, I don't know that it's, it's even worth even asking about the ones that you're dissatisfied with, if we're going to open it up for another?
It, it's not that I'm dissatisfied with any of the services they provide. We have checks and balances with WellPath to where they're responsive to whatever the situations are as, as it rise with dealing with, you know, staffing and, and so forth.
Yeah, so, so you had a situation with staffing?
Uh, any entity will have periodical situation with staffing and staffing reports and things like that. But they have been very diligent with providing the staffing that's needed to be able to get the job done.
Okay.
Mr. Perkins Williams?
Um, thank you for your report. We had a lot of discussion in the past about the healthcare delivered to the people who are residents incarcerated in the jail. I'm concerned of knowing the count because I remember, and I, I may not be the best person to recall about numbers of deaths, how many people who were taken to the hospital. These are things that we talked about, and I'm not sure that all of the members sitting up here tonight was a part of that discussion when we talked about going to the, the hospital and, um, how much it was costing and whatever. I didn't see this similar kind of report like this. But, um, we did support, uh, the office of the sheriff for the help that she wanted to provide. And, um, but there was some problems on this board about, and I'm, 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 I'm not as strong talker as Tom is, but as far as the services that this group provided, whether or not they produced the kind of report that was needed to make a sound judgment. And deaths, there was something about deaths in the jail that occurred. And overdoses, I think that was a part of it. There were a number of things that, that we discussed during that process of sending out and getting the RFP for the healthcare of the inmates. Now, you, and Commissioner Huggins brought up what I was concerned about. I would like to know what issues that you all see. I see that there are, there you guys, I don't see any girls, but who are here to make this report. I would like to know, what are your concerns? Maybe that's a better way, is that a good, good, good thing about, what are your concern? I want to make sure the wording is good, about this particular agency as it relates to the healthcare of inmates in the facility of the jail.
Mary, I think you're maybe talking about one time where they didn't do the pre-assessment, somebody died.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and overdose, they came in with, with drugs in their system, and they couldn't... There was some stuff that we talked about, we, it was more than once that we did discuss that. And when people start to die, I'm very concerned about it because I get to hear it in the community of nature. And unless I missed this, or miss, I wasn't able to pick it up in my good eyes and my dense light brain, I, I'm a little concerned about a, a better report as to why there is a need to change at this point.
So, let me respond to that. In the pamphlet you received associated with WellPath, there were three incidents of, of death, I believe.
What, what page?
And we weren't, um...
I want to mark my pages with a check mark or something, so I can go back there.
We were in compliance with everything. There was no deficiencies associated with us nor WellPath. So, there were zero deaths as a response in reference, WellPath being deficient, or we as a facility being deficient, overdose deaths that took place. As far as overdoses, overdoses happened...
Excuse me, what page were that, you were showing?
It's going to be on page number two.
Okay. Death means death for me.
It's going to be shortly after the matrix.
Okay.
Which is page five of five. And shortly, the next page should be zero deaths as it relates to WellPath being provider, as in being responsible for those individuals or having any deficiencies associated with those deaths.
I also wanted to include that, there was something about reporting the computerized reports at the time of our review for this. Does this company generate the report that you need to? Maybe I'm not...
Yes.
If one didn't have computerized report, I'm not quite sure. Might have to go back and, and see if we can get our clerk to prove those, those records. But they talked about the reports.
I believe they're talking about an electronic health record.
Yeah, something like that, yeah, yeah.
They have incorporated that.
So, they do have electronic medical records, yes, ma'am?
That substantiate the kind of information and data you need.
Yes, is, and it's heavily stat-driven for all medical services in the facility.
Now, where was that, death is on here? I don't see, but anyway, um...
If you look at page two...
Page two.
Do y'all see that? The pages are off a little.
Okay, so is it page two or two point nothing that you can't see?
Yes, it's just listed as page two under Pitt County, North Carolina. WellPath cherishes its partnership with Pitt County since July 1 of 2021. And the medical team at PCDC, along with the leadership, has established an outstanding rapport with the custody partners and stakeholders. They've been transparent with us.
Am I the only one not seeing it?
I don't see it. Oh, right here.
Oh, okay. Oh, oh, there's no page number. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Well, that, those are my questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, I'm going to look at this a bit more closely. But I was concerned about all of the discussions we had, and I won't call it rigmarole, if there a better term for that, that we went through when we were trying to evaluate as to whether or not we should, uh, accept the, the sheriff's, I won't say insistence, but putting this forward as to who we should get. And now, you're going to open up the RFP to see, and it's going to be, how is it going to be put out there? Where are you going to do it, countywide, statewide, or how are you going to look for it? Where are you going to search for this kind of services?
Yes. So, it's going to be published in the Daily Reflector and, and where, we'll go through that process. And, and once we do that process, we will, at that point... go through that process, and, and once we do that process, we will, at that point, move further and find out what entities are interested, and put in a bid in reference to RFP request. And at that point, I believe it's gonna be closing on, it'll go out on August the 19th, and it'll be closing on September 16th, and that's for any agency. And believe it or not, this go out very broadly. It's not just in the state of North Carolina, but it go out very broadly to those entities that are concerned and interested in opportunity for a potential bid. That meets the criteria.
There seems to have been, there seems to me a part where the doctor, there was a, I won't say conflict, but there was something dealing with the doctor and making the report and assessment as it relates to what there was in-house in administration. I might, I might not have it right, but there was something to the professional medical status that was needed. But, um, I was just trying to ask those questions because I know we had long discussions about it to the wee hours of the morning. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ward? Um, do we have any other further comments down here? Commissioner Coulson, any further follow-up questions?
No.
Um, I will, I have a couple of questions. Um, and I'll just start with, it looks like the date of this letter is April 24th, and I assume there's been some back and forth between the office and, and WellPath. Um, my concern is that we are seemingly backed up against a wall again here on the provision of healthcare at the jail. And when, when will, if this contract is terminated, as it seems to be the intent, when will WellPath, just to be clear, cease providing services at the jail?
It takes 90 days.
90 days, so 90 days from termination, so what, what date would that be?
Our plan is for the new services to begin on November 1st of 2024.
What page you looking at? I'm sorry.
I just went back to the agenda abstract, but that information is in there for that start date of a new tentative contract.
So, WellPath, and that's assuming that you have an RFP that's acceptable, that, that, that's agreeable?
That, that is correct.
And so in the event that there is not one that comes in at a, at a better level than, than WellPath, what, what do we do?
Uh, we have to provide the services for the detention center regardless. Um, if WellPath is gonna make a determination on exiting, um, we have to look at other plans for contractors to have an opportunity to step in. We do, we have shared communication with several vendors that could potentially be interested in, in a worst-case scenario, um, as an opportunity for, uh, getting RFP in or emergency relief if it was necessary for something such as that.
So we've got, we've got some vendors that are kind of being eyeballed that maybe, maybe could come, come to, come to bear if need be?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, um, and, and I will, um, well, I guess I'll leave it there. I just, I guess what, and Chief Kepa, this is not directed at you, but when we had this long, drawn-out conversation years ago, um, this is exactly what we said would happen.
Yes, it was.
This is exactly what we said would happen, that it was a bait and switch, that they would come in low and then come at us high. And what my concern is now is that we're sitting here, that you're in a tough position again, and we are as representatives of having to, to fund your provision of health, jail, jail health, right?
Chris, can I ask something?
Yes, you may.
You bring up an interesting point. Why is it taking three months to get to us?
Well, Chief Kepa-
What was the reason for that?
Well, I don't know, I'll be saying it again. So, so the question from Commissioner Coulson was, um, what, the letter was dated April 24th-
Has it taken three months?
And why, why do we see it-
Three months later.
In late July?
And right before we have to do a budget.
Well, the decision was made to present this to you all, um, early last week, that you have a chance to review it over the weekend, you know, if you, if you chose to do so. And I know it's rather short notice.
Mrs. Chamberlain, what do we do with this motion?
So you're, but, but essentially tonight, what you're asking is that we authorize you to put out the RFP?
That is what the goal was initially, anyway, is we wanted to send it out for RFP because we're extremely dissatisfied with the 22% increase on top of the 5% that you, you all approved in the budget already.
Okay.
Uh, we know that's challenging. Um, again, I still say that-
Do you have an idea about where these other folks are gonna, do you have an idea about these third-party vendors that you've approached? Do you have an idea about where they might come in on an annual?
If you're asking me to be realistic, I think with post-COVID, and being realistic with the medical industry, with nursing, nursing staff, drugs, medications, if you will, for inmates, asking me to be realistic, uh, I predict some very similar numbers to what you're looking at. And it's a reality check for us all. Um, and I know we, we, we look back on the past, but we cannot tie the past to dealing with this medical contract because of post-COVID and the experiences that the country has dealt with as it relates to cost, and cost is a factor for everybody, but I'm almost certain that there will be very strong similarities and where that price come in at.
So a similar price to what-
Very similar.
So I guess then that leads me to the next question. If we're satisfied with the services that WellPath's providing, and we're relatively certain that the vendors are gonna come back at near or about the same near number that WellPath has come to us for, why are, are we being asked to go out and find another vendor?
Because to be a good steward of such an increase of that magnitude, the only response is to be responsive in that process, to make sure that we bring it to you all so that you all wouldn't be able to say that we're favoring one company over another. We just want proper service for the inmates at the facility. Cost is always gonna be a factor, but at the same time, you still have to focus on, are they getting the job done? And, and just, just going back to the deaths that you talked about. Deaths will happen in jails and will never stop. The goal is to prevent them, the goal is to provide, uh, the proper medical care for inmates in the facility, and WellPath has done that. I have no argument with the fact that they, they've done that. We're still NCCHC accredited, uh, just waiting for the opportunity to finish the accreditation with them as well.
So is it potential that WellPath would put in a RFP for the same amounts?
WellPath is planning to bid as well.
Okay, all right. That is my question, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, do we have any other, Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Um, I am-
Make the motion to let them put out.
I am hopeful that, that, um, we will not have, that we will have a, that you will have a lower bid than what-
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm hopeful that you will have vendors that will, will present a lower bid than what, uh, WellPath is offering. Uh, I'm hoping that maybe, uh, somebody local will be able to, to offer a better proposal, bid for, so, um, and, uh, yes, WellPath increase is a bit mu, is a bit much, uh, to ask. And, you know, as, as we all have said, we talked about this, you know, when WellPath was, was brought in, you know, so we, we're here now, and, uh, I guess we got to bite the bullet on it, and, um, I'll be glad to make a motion that we, uh-
I'm gonna make the motion so I can say-
So what's the pleasure of the board?
If there are no other questions or whatever I'm-
Can I have a moment?
Okay.
The reason for why we are just recently bringing this information before you all, we had the meeting with WellPath on June-
June 4th.
June 4th. So we didn't get it till late. They were working on what they were gonna try to present to do the last year of the, third year of the budget year cycle. And so that was part of the reason for the delay as well, because we didn't get it till not long ago. Um, so it's a bit of a challenge for us as well.
Okay, well, I make the motion that we approve you to open up the, to extend the RFP for the new, uh, medical care.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
All right.
Is, is that the end of this?
Moving on to reapportment of Tax Administrator Russ, Russell Hill and Sam Crew.
Good evening again, Vice Chairman, I'm Board Manager Gallagher. I bring an item for decision in the reapportment of Russell Hill as Pitt County Tax Administrator. Under North Carolina General Statute 105, the Machinery Act, Pitt County has to appoint a tax collector and tax assessor. Russell Hill was, um, was appointed interim tax administrator on June 20th, 2022, and as administrator on August 21st, 2022, for a two-year term. Mr. Hill directs, uh, has directed division of assessment and collection divisions of tax administration, and has performed his duty as well during his current term. Furthermore, Mr. Hill meets all the state requirements for appointment by holding an assessment, collection, mapping, certifications, along with keeping his continuing ed, or continuing education current. North Carolina General Statute 105 allows the board to reapport Mr. Hill for a two-year, or a four-year term. If you have no questions, it is my recommendation that the board consider a motion to appoint Mr. Hill to a four-year term as tax administrator and direct the clerk to the board to administer him the oath of office, um, this week. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Holman?
Motion to-
Got a motion in a second.
You know, the thing is, is that the man, he gives you a tax bill that you look at and you say, oh my, but you, you like him. You're supposed to hate the tax bill, but you like him.
Oh, we're voting now?
So we're voting for a four-year?
Well, mine is still got-
You can buy a house now. If you can find one.
It's unanimous. All right, moving on, um, next we'll get to Madam Manager, reapportment to the Winterville Board of Adjustment.
Yes, it is recommended that this board reappoint Jeffrey Earl Brierley to the Winterville Board of Adjustment for another three-year term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second.
Gotta vote.
All right, next we're back to Madam Manager, reapportment to the ABC Board.
It is recommended that this board make a motion to reappoint Mike Fitzpatrick to the ABC Board for a second term set to expire June 30th, 2027.
So move.
All right, motion in second, let's vote. All right, we'll, we have, uh, commissioners' comments and committee reports. Let's start down here with Commissioner Ward.
No comments.
All right, Commissioner Ward.
I don't want to belong.
Commissioner Coulson?
No comments.
Oh, well, I do have a comment. I want to offer condolences to the family and the people of Texas on the loss of Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee. So she, um, she was an outstanding Congresswoman, so just want to offer our, our condolences to her.
When'd she die?
Just last weekend.
No, I hadn't heard.
No comment, so we can hurry up and go home.
I have a brief comment. Um, this evening, we had heard a lot about a request for raise from Pitt County Sheriff, and we've heard that a number of times, and I just want to make sure that we are all aware and we hear the numbers clearly when it's spoken, um, because I do think that it's been referred on a number of occasions that the last time we've given a raise was back in 2019, and that's just not true. Um, this year, the sheriff makes $168,000. With our standard COLA, cost of living, adjustment, the sheriff stands to make a 5% raise on that for a total of $8,400, just like every other employee in Pitt County did. And I've stated publicly, and I will state it again as I think it's important, and I think it's, it's in an ethical position, and I like where we stand on, at least where I stand on it, but the sheriff's office is an elected position. It is not a position that we hire, that we make subjective judgments on the job that the sheriff is doing. We set the budget for the county, and we have to make a market assessment about what those positions are worth. Now, we hear about the value and the worth, the personal value and the worth of the job that the sheriff is doing based on the feedback from her supporters, and that is warranted for supporters to support their sheriff. But I will submit today, and I will continue to submit, that it is inappropriate for any board member here to make a subjective judgment on an elected official's job performance and to warrant a pay increase based on that judgment. Just as likely, if I was not satisfied with the, with the job of an elected official, I should not vote to decrease that individual salary based on that subjective judgment when the official is elected by the public. It would be the equivalent of me being super satisfied with Commissioner Coulson's job and saying that he needs to be paid more.
You picked the right one.
And now here's the thing, though. The people vote to put elected officials in seats, and if the people are satisfied with the job, then they continue to do that. Our board, in my view, and I'm just one of none, but in my view, and I think it's something that needs to be heard because we hear a lot of the other, the board, in my view, sets a competitive pay rate for positions that are important in the county, and we value the Office of the Sheriff highly, and the metrics bear that out. We pay the Office of the Sheriff more than comparable counties do. I think now we are the 17th largest county in the state, and we pay the sheriff far more away than those comparable counties. I'm not exactly sure what it is now, but I know it's higher than the 17th-rate county. The sheriff is also the highest-paid law enforcement chief in the county. So we value public safety in the county, I value it, and we continue to do so through our budget process. I think it's important for the public to hear and to see the real numbers when it's, when it's taken under consideration. With that, I'll, um, it looks like we've got to go into closed session?
Briefly, yes.
Briefly?
Rachel Mary Groutz, it's been suggested this body go into closed session under the following grounds. One, to consult with an attorney employee retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A5, which privileges hereby acknowledged. Two, to instruct the public body staff concerning the position to be taken in negotiating the acquisition of real property under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A5. And three, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-10. record under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-10.
And before we entertain that motion, I would like to thank Representative Gloria Steen-Brown, who we did see in the audience that I failed to mention. So, just saw her walking out. So, thank you, Representative Brown for coming. Entertained a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, welcome back. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes for May 20, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion to second, let's please vote.
I'd like to offer a motion that we adjourn and go home.
Second, second, second.
Oh, I didn't vote. I was busy picking up my pocketbook.
While we're adjourned, we'd like to thank our, thank our new security forces that are here with us today. Thank you all for being here.
And you look good.